We'll call this meeting of the Craven County Board of Commissioners regular session for Monday, November the 7th, 2022 to order. Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the roll.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Commissioner Lainer?
Here.
Commissioner Mark?
Here.
Commissioner McCabe?
Here.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Here.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Here.
Chairman Jones?
Here. If you will, please let us stand together as our prayer will be given by the county attorney, and then please remain standing to our Pledge of Allegiance.
Eternal God, this day we come humbly before you and ask your blessing upon our county and these county commissioners. In your goodness, be present to our citizens and allies who are far from home and seeking safety. May our elected leaders make it their aim to do justice, love, mercy, and walk humbly with you. Finally, dear Lord, give the members of this body passion for their cause, eloquence in debate, and respect for those with whom they disagree. Most especially, grant them, at the end of the day, the certain knowledge that they have served their county well. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for We want to welcome each of you here this evening, for those that are in attendance and for those that may be viewing online. I would ask that all of us that are in attendance would check our cell phones to make sure that they are silent so they would not disrupt this meeting. We would appreciate that. Commissioners, if you will allow, just for a moment, I'd like to take chairman's privilege and would like to recognize Commissioner George Lainer to give a few remarks.
Chairman, thank you. I'd be honored, too. This evening, prior to coming over here, this board and staff and some media folks and some other folks met over at the convention center to start an Operation Green Light. Operation Green Light is in recognition to shine the light on our veterans in this county and across the country. It's a nationwide movement that started back in August when I found out about it and brought it to this board, and the board approved to go along with it. So I challenge each and every one of you to have a green light at your homesite or your businesses. We're going to light four county buildings tonight. We lit the convention center. We're going to light this building. We're going to light the courthouse and the veteran service officer down on MLK in recognition and showing support for all of our veterans and to recognize them and put the light on them that's needed. And again, I can't thank this board enough for allowing me to do this, to bring it forward, and you all seeing the need and the effort. And like was brought out there, we got 13,000 vets in this county, in this county alone. And I bring it up now, and I brought it up there, with the two new bills that's just been passed on the Clean Water Act for Camp Lejeune, the Blue Navy for Vietnam Agent Orange, and then what we're seeing now for Desert Storm, Desert Shield, Iraq and Afghanistan. Our military is going to start showing the wear and tear they have on our young people. A lot of you, not a lot of you, but some of us on this board that's my age and remember coming out of Vietnam, and it took a long time to get the recognition and get the help that was needed for our vets, and we're still trying to get it. So this is just a little symbolic effort to shine the light on them, and again, thank you.
Chair. Well, this board thanks you for your leadership in this, and we are proud here in Craven County to be a military county, and we do support our military 100%. I know this Board of Commissioners do, and we've got many members on this board who have served faithfully and also who are very involved in military affairs across not only this county, this state, and this nation, and we thank you. Thank you again, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Commissioners, you have there before you your agenda. Are there any items you desire to remove or to add to tonight's agenda? Vice Chairman Booker?
Yeah. Chairman, I'd like to add the public hearing, I'm sorry, the petition of citizens. Normally, we do that at the end of our meeting. We only have one person who wants to speak tonight, so I'd like to give them the opportunity to speak first so they don't have to wait for the whole meeting.
Okay. We have had the recommendation to combine the petition of citizens for agenda topics and general topics. Are there any other items that the board desires to? All right, here, none. You've heard the request. You're making the motion to approve this agenda with the necessary changes. We have a second. Is there further discussion on the motion? Here, none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passed. All right. The first item we have before us, Commissioners, is a public hearing for the 2022-23 Schedule of Values. And at this time, I'm going to ask Ms. Young, if she will, to come forward and make a few opening comments.
Good evening, Chairman Jones.
Good evening.
Vice Chairman Booker and Craven County Commissioners, as always, thank you for having me. First comment is to say that three weeks ago, we began our town meetings in regard to our revaluation 2023. We've held seven of our eight. We have our last one scheduled for Monday, November 14th, at Riverbend. We've had a variety in attendance, some not so much as others, but one thing that has been consistent throughout is the citizens are asking very, very good questions, so I've been very encouraged by that. The purpose of my being here tonight is still in regard to the revaluation 2023. Three weeks ago, when I was here on October 17th, I presented to you our Schedule of Values Standards and Rules, and I told you in compliance with General Statute 105-317 letter C that I would be back again here today to present a public hearing time. This is dedicated just for our citizens to comment on our Schedule of Values. Now, one note in that is that this Schedule of Values book has been readily available for the public to view, and in the Tax Department, I have not had anyone come to view just yet. However, Chairman Jones, we need to be in compliance here. The statute reads 105-317, letter C, number 2, letter B. The time and place of a public hearing on the proposed schedule, standards, and rules shall be held by the Board of County Commissioners at least seven days, which we're doing at least 14 days, before adopting the final schedule, standards, and rules. The next time I will be before you will be two weeks on the 21st to adopt. So at this time, Chairman, if you would allow, for a public comment.
All right. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing? I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Here, none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passed. We are in public hearing. Mr. Vice Chair, do we have anyone signed up?
No one signed up to speak at the public hearing.
Okay. As we always try to do, we want to give any citizen that may have failed to sign up when you came in the opportunity to speak before the board. Anyone here desiring? Seeing no one desiring to speak, do I have a motion that we close the public hearing?
Motion to go out of public hearing.
I have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. Any discussion on the motion? Here, none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passed. Thank you. Appreciate it. Next agenda item is the petition of citizens. This is for agenda and general topics. Mr. Vice Chair?
Yes, we have one person, Ms. Brenda Henry, would like to speak.
Good evening to all.
Good evening, Ms. Henry. If you don't mind, just stating your address for the record, we would appreciate it. Thank you.
My name is Brenda Brimage Henry. I live at 125 Arrietown Loop Road, New Bern, North Carolina, 28562. The purpose of our being here today, and I'm just the one that's speaking, but we have others, and we would have had more, but we have some on the sick list. So oftentimes, when you're in public service, you work hard and you do a lot of things, and we come and we hassle you some time or give you nice polite urges or nudges to do some things. And we've been here now, coming back and forth, for quite a few years, and finally, we met our goal in this particular instance. And that goal was to get Mont Brimage Drive road paved. We have been working at that since 1975, and we come back to tonight to say thank you. A special thank you to our Commissioner, Commissioner Booker, and I called him Boucher, for all of his help and some of the things that typically a Commissioner wouldn't take the time to do. He did. And we also want to thank someone who we had worked with before our current Commissioner came on, and that is Commissioner McCabe, who helped guide us in terms of navigation. But it's easy to say thank you, but it's a very humbling thing to show appreciation and heartfelt thanks. So we wanted to take the time, if you would stand, there were my comrades that are here, but it's usually about eight to 10 of us. We come to say thank you to our Commissioner and to our aided Commissioner for all the work that you did. And like I said, both soldiering, you're coming out to observe and inspect and assess. So on that note, thanks again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right, Commissioners, item three is the consent agenda. You have there before you the minutes of October 17th, 2022, regular session, tax releases and refunds, health budget amendment, and our recreation bench donation budget amendment. Are there any consent agenda items that you desire to pull?
I'm making motion to approve the agenda as is.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Any further discussion on the motion? Here, none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Lainer?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes. Item four is the Community Child Protection Team presentation we have with us this evening. Ms. Jeanne Cook, who is the chair, good evening.
Thank you for the opportunity to come present the information. Slide show. We'd like to point out the information that I'm providing is from 2021, so there have been changes that we've been implementing in 2022. I hope to present that in April or May to y'all. Next slide. The purpose of the North Carolina Community Child Protection Team and Community Fatality Team is to develop a community-wide approach for child abuse and neglect, understand causes of childhood death, make and implement recommendations of laws and policies to prevent future maltreatment of child abuse, neglect, and death. And as a team, we are charged by the North Carolina State Statute to report to the County Board of Commissioners on an annual basis with recommendations, if any, and advocate for system improvements and need for resources where there have been gaps and deficiencies that may assist. Part of the team are representatives of public and non-public agencies in the community that provides public, provide services to children and their families. The team consists of a variety of community partners, including DSS, law enforcement, the school system, the Health Department, the core system, health and mental health providers, and a few others listed on this slide. Next slide, please. There are four representatives of the county that represents the county at large. We currently have one vacant position in the parent partner that we are trying to field. That is a consumer of services with DSS that we're trying to get them to share their experience and what worked in the past and what to help them in the future to maybe prevent from future cases. Next slide. In 2021, there was 1,305 CPS reports of abuse, neglect, and/or dependency reported to the Craven County Department of Social Services. Of those 1,305 reports, 884, 68% of them met the statutory definition to be screened in, assessed. Next slide. As you can see by the chart, you can see that compared to 2020, there was a few reports received, but there were more screened in. There were 68 reports more screened in in 2021 than 2020, and it was 248 more reports since 2017. We see this as being an increase in trend in the last five years, and in 2022, from January through August, we've already received 860 reports where 543, 63%, have met the criteria to be screened in. This is an average of 85 reports per month. Next slide. Of those reports, 71 were reports where a referral was made to our CC4C, the Care Coordination for Children, and CMARC, the Care Management for at-Risked Children through the Craven County Health Department. 61 of those 71 reports were screened in by Craven County DSS to be assessed. And as you can see, in 2017, there were 30 babies born positive for drugs, and here we are, 2021, with 71 born positive for drugs. So 41% 41 more reports, a 42% increase in the last five years. And again, here in 2022, there have been 51 reports already received from January through August, and we expect that number to continue to increase. Next slide, please. In 2021, the Community Child Protection Team and Fatality Team reviewed eight open DSS cases of child abuse and neglect. Substance abuse, domestic violence, untreated mental health issues remain the leading contributory factors of child abuse and neglect. Of the eight cases, they involve trauma and mental health, the needs of children and parents. The team offered recommendations to presenting social workers on additional resources to assist the children and families. They had consisted of working with the schools on IEPs for children, DJJ, medical providers regarding insurance and gaps in medical coverage, and followed it with mental health providers on therapeutic placements for children not in DSS custody. Next slide, please. The Craven Child Community Protection Team also reviewed seven deaths that occurred for children who resided in Craven County in 2020. The primary recommendations from these case reviews include educating parents and caregivers on prenatal care and safe sleep. Most of these deaths were premature births. The parents had received medical care. There were some that did not have them from the beginning, so we are coordinating with the Health Department and the hospital, really talking about the importance of prenatal care and safe sleep. Craven County DSS has implemented a new safe sleep brochure that we are giving out to all of our families that we're working with on the importance of the ABCs. They sleep, children's babies sleep alone, they sleep on their back, they sleep in a crib, and they sleep in a smoke and vape-free home. State policy is requiring that we document, DSS documents, that at each home visit in an open case, this discussion must be made with the families, and that it's a reminder for families that if they do not have pack-a-plays or cribs for children under 1 years old, that we provide that to them. Next slide. With our in-home services team with Craven County DSS, there were 71 cases found in need of services in 2021, or a total of 135 families being served by Craven County. In 2020, there was an average of 17 cases per worker. The high caseload was due to vacancies on the team. The state standard is 10 cases per worker. So you can see how those vacancies really impacted the number of cases workers were assigned. In addition, there were 67 in-home courtesy requests that were completed for other counties and states. 46 of the 71 cases had temporary safety providers. Usually, that's a relative or a parent, someone that's identified by the family for the child stayed with to ensure their safety while the CPS assessment is receiving services. 27 of those cases had court oversight. Craven County DSS require, what we're doing is that any case where there's a temporary safety provider in place at the end of the assessment, the case is being having court oversight. So the parents' rights are protected, and they have that legal representation. Next slide, please. Foster care, there was 28 children that gained permanence and left foster care. 36 children entered foster care in 2021, for a total of 104 children remaining at the end of the year in DSS custody. Of the 36 children who entered custody, 20 children were due to the parent's substance use, again, the increase in substance use. Craven County DSS had 14 licensed foster homes at the end of 2021. We do have limited numbers of foster homes, but we are continuing to advocate with churches, the schools, communities, to really advocate for foster families. We are working with Easter Seals, the Boys and Girls Homes, Access, and other licensed providers if we do not have a licensed home for a child to go to. We have had children reside at DSS at our Hope Family Resource Center while we work with Trillium to look for placements. We utilize B3 placements when needed. These are licensed, they're not licensed, but they are sanctioned homes by the court. Next slide. The Community Child Protection Team is continuing to support and educate families in the community. Again, we continue to provide pack-and-place to support safe sleep for any child under 1 years old. We participated in the annual Embrace Recovery Rally to bring awareness to the individuals and families with prevention, treatment, recovery, and support services that struggle with substance misuse and the families and the friends that it may impact. Next slide. Nancy's House, our local CAC, is a community-based child-friendly center offering consolidated care for children and families affected by sex abuse or severe physical abuse. The NVT, D Team, represents a variety of disciplines, including law enforcement, the DA's office, the base, hospital staff, mental health providers. The NVT Team meets two times a month, coordinate and discuss services for cases that have been reported. For all abuse reports received by Craven County DSS, a referral for a child forensic interview and a medical evaluation is submitted. 53 referrals were completed for forensic interviews and medical evaluations in 2021. Next slide. Craven County DSS continues to partner with PFE, which is a Partnership for Excellence. We collaborate with Benchmarks, Trillium, and our local mental health providers to provide trauma-informed services. This is a program for children who are 5 to 17 years old who are in foster care, and it frontloads services with a child getting a TICA, a trauma-informed comprehensive clinical assessment, and that's the first step on the PFE pathway, with frontloads these services, gets children into mental health, with mental health providers to help reduce placements. It gets everyone involved so they can understand the child's mental health, and of those in 2021, we had 28 children eligible for the PFE pathway. So of those, there had 36 children enter foster care in 2021, and 28 of those had a PFE, the TICA. The other children that did not receive those were under the age of 5 years old. Next slide. Hope Family Resource Center is a community center whose mission is to work in partnership with families in the community to provide support, information, and education so together we can build the strong, healthy families. This is a community-based center by DSS. You do not have an open, do not have to have an open case to receive services there at the Resource Center. They offer a nurture-parenting program, which 25 parents participated, three participated in the triple P parenting. Domestic violence assessments, there was 32 parents. Domestic violence group, there were 13 men and 10 women, and four foster parents participated in the trauma training. Next slide. So our troubling trends that the Community Child Protection Team identified was the increase in the number of screened-in CPS reports, cases involving substance abuse and mental health. There are limited resources to families. The waitlist is approximately three weeks for a parent or caregiver to complete a comprehensive clinical assessment, to include a substance abuse assessment. Three weeks is a long time when you're, you have 45 days to make a case decision according to state policy. So if you're waiting three weeks, you wasted, you waited half your time waiting for that assessment to get those recommendations. Parents and caregivers being able to identify an appropriate TSP that agency, the agency can approve, when it's unsafe for a child to remain in the home. Agency must look at the CPS history, criminal records, and safety of the home and support if they're financially stable if they can be approved. Locate the absent parents. We have parents that are all over the United States, so we have to hunt them down, find phone numbers, make efforts to locate them so they can make plans for their children. Identify mental health placement for children and willingness by providers to accept children where they are clinically recommended for the placement. And the difficulty of the work, cases are often complex and times require long hours. Next slide. The moving forward, provide families with safe sleep brochures and discuss appropriate day and nighttime sleeping. Continue with the third level consultation with management of safety planning for all substance-affected infants. At this time, Craven County DSS requires that at the safety planning, that the supervisor be contacted on top of the management regarding that safe plan of care, making sure it's appropriate, and management attends all case staff and for case decision to make sure that the child is safe and the parents have made an appropriate plan. Continue to partner with our CAC for all abuse cases and submit appropriate referrals for community partners to prevent future maltreatment. Next slide. Our future needs is to advocate for reduction of state standards to get CPS caselos to 1 to 7 in assessments and in-home, and 1 to 12 in foster care. The state standard currently for assessments and in-home is 1 to 10 and 1 to 15 in foster care. Continue funding to support Dick's Center of Crisis Fest to help address the opioid crisis, and continue to advocate for consistent mental health treatment in children in foster care, prevent placement disruptions such as Medicaid transformation and children and families specialty plan, and continue to support Nancy's House, and continue to advocate for additional mental health substance abuse resources for children and families. Next slide. Any questions?
All right, Commissioners, questions? Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I've got two. Going back to Nancy's House, for children who are suspected of having been sexually abused, what is the wait time from the report to a, some appropriate forensic discussion with the child to evaluate? Or is it not that?
I'm sorry, 28 to 48 hours. Nancy's House has been wonderful. They are available immediately if needed, but usually within 28, 24 hours, we're in there getting a medical or forensic interview.
That's an improvement.
Yes, they have been wonderful.
Thank you. And my other question is, on future needs, you say advocate for state reduction of state standards. I'm not sure what that means.
The current state for foster care workers is 1 to 15. That means the state is saying that a foster care worker can have up to 15 cases. That's our state standard. They can have, I mean, right now, I mean, most workers have 15, maybe a little bit more. Again, it depends on the vacancies, but the state standard, what the state is saying, each worker can handle 15 cases.
So you're saying fewer children per caseworker?
Yes.
Okay. I was having trouble translating.
And they can actually do that real social work.
Right.
Because the demands and the needs are more, we locate these apps of parents and stuff, so we're asking for less children. Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman? Go ahead. You say that you have 14 licensed foster homes. What are the plans in the future for more foster homes? How are we going to go about that?
We're going to reach out to the community and to the churches and to schools and to other foster parents, word of mouth, and we're going to, we're going to really recruit. We have a recruitment plan that we're trying to work on and really reaching out to these families and seeing if they'll be considered to go through and become licensed.
Okay.
Word of mouth is the best way. So if y'all need people, y'all send them to Craven County and DSS, and we'll get them licensed.
What's the average number of children in a foster care home right now?
In our foster homes?
Yeah.
Per home, you mean?
Per home.
It depends on how many they're licensed for. The state, they have certain criterias that how many children they're allowed, consider their bedroom space and things like that.
Okay, but we have 14 homes, so how many children are in each home?
I would have to get that information, and that, but I, we reach out to our homes before we reach out to any outside providers.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Lainer?
Jeanne, thanks for being here. I mean, I got a suggestion to bring to the board. I know you said you're going to come back in May or so. I recommend they come back in March to brief this board, and I say that because that's the same time you're going to be working your budget and everything else. This, this is a sidekick of our opioid epidemic. This is the results. It's coming down, and you see it, you see it grow, and it's growing. I mean, DSS came to us first of the, last year and talked to us. I mean, some of these caseworkers had more than 25 cases that they were working, and we do not. and we do not want to see this county on the national news of somebody that's fallen through the crack because we couldn't get to them in time. Jenny, you're all doing a superb job and everything else, but this is, this Vice Chair, we've talked about this before when we was at our meeting, this is, ties in to our opioid. This, this, this is the side effect of it. This is what's generating and pushing it, and we need to tie this all together because it's not gonna get better. It's not gonna get, we've got, we've got some big problems coming, and, and the manager will state, as far as foster care, this is the highest we've ever had foster care. We've never had foster care numbers this high. And not only that, but look at the numbers that the county is responsible for, for seniors, not just our children, but for seniors that we've taken on, that the courts have put on to us, that DSS is now responsible for and get it. So I would make a motion to you and have the managers get, that you all get heard back in, in March or April early, so you can take a look at it.
I would second that motion.
All right, you got a motion and a second to request for these folks to come back to us, the Community Child Protection Team come back to us in March of two thousand twenty-three. Any further discussion on the motion? You're not all those in favor, six to five are saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passed. All right, Vice Chair.
We must have a hundred churches in Craven County, maybe more, I don't know. It would be nice if, if you could give us a specific phone number that we could, those of us who attend church, we could make our church aware of, if anybody, an announcement could be made, if anybody has any interest, you don't have to make a commitment, if you have an interest, here's a phone number you can call to get information about being a foster parent. Could we get a phone number specifically? Would that be you, or who would that be that that church or that church member could contact? Because that's, I think that's probably the number-one resource of where we ought to be going to get foster parents.
It would actually be through our Hope Family Resource Center. Brittany Rasscliffe is the supervisor there, and the phone number there is two-five-two-six-three-six-sixty-four-seventy-two.
Fifty-four?
Sixty-four.
Sixty-four?
Seventy-two.
Seventy-two.
Yes, and they have the two licensing workers there, and they would take anybody who's interested in information, and they'll follow up with them and let them know what the criteria is to become a foster parent.
Yeah, I think it would just be good to say, hey, if you have any interest.
Yes.
Why don't you just make this phone call and meet with somebody?
Yes.
My, my last question then would be, well, thank you for what you do, and you said at the end of the year, we had a hundred and four children in foster care, I believe in your presentation.
Twenty-twenty-one.
Right, at the end of twenty-twenty-one, which today would be, how many do you know?
I don't know. I will say that within the last two months, we have taken at least eight kids into custody because of.
I checked on this just a few weeks ago, and it was like one-twelve.
It's, it's one of the highest numbers we've had in a long time.
I think it is the highest number.
Yes.
Mr. County Manager, you.
It's approaching a hundred and twenty, sir.
I'm sorry?
Approaching a hundred and twenty. I don't have Mr. Mayor's last report here, but it.
Approaching a hundred and twenty. I hope everybody heard that, and we need to all see what we can do to find somebody who would be willing to step up and take care of these kids.
Yep. Commissioner Smith.
My question is, what percentage of children are taken out of troubled homes and returned to those homes?
Well, in twenty-twenty-one, we saw that thirty-six children left custody. I don't know what that percentage would be, but there's more coming in than's going out.
They're going back to the homes?
Um, I, I can get those numbers for you, but if they're not going back home, we're looking at family members, close family, friends, and things like that that they could get permits with.
Because I am aware that when I was working, that sometimes children that we recommended to Social Services ended up returning to the homes that were troubled, and I'm wondering if that's still happening.
When children go back, we ask.
Because they have to, they have to follow certain qualifications and deadlines and that kind of thing, and it's not to the child's advantage.
Yes, ma'am. We, we look at trial home placement, we ask the court for trial home placement, and that stays open a period of months so we can monitor that child in the home and the family's progress, make sure they continue to be a safe environment for the child.
All right, other questions from the board? Um, two things. I'd just expand a little bit on Vice Chair Booker's comments about churches. You say this is one of your objectives, one of your desires is to get out into the community. Do you have someone at hand that y'all have identified that would, to do this, to be able to go out and share the message about foster care?
We do. Brittany Rasscliffe, the supervisor of the Family Resource Center, and the two licensing workers. They'll go out to the community and, and recruit.
Mr. County Manager, this may be something, and probably already being done, but our lack of knowledge of internal affairs day-to-day, but I think, what I hear from this board, I think there is a desire for us to do more education to the citizens of this county. So if we could maybe put this on our radar to, you know, not to kick, kick it down the road, but definitely as we get into two thousand and twenty-three, is to see what we've got to do to identify, to make sure somebody can go out, and even if we have to identify some resources to, to help to do that, I think this board would be willing to discuss that, what I'm hearing. So if we could bring that back to the board for discussion.
Yes, sir.
Also, the last comment I'll make, ever since I've been on this board, one of the most troubling statistics that we've received is about substance-affected infants, and, you know, to see it doubled since two thousand and seventeen to two thousand and twenty-one is, is definitely very troubling to me. And, you know, I, I said some years ago that I think there should be consequences. There are no consequences, and what I've always been told, and that don't come from us, it comes from the General Assembly. Substance abuse is a sickness, but, you know, we're getting to a point where we're affecting, these children are gonna be affected the rest of their lives, and they're innocent. And I don't know, you know, me personally, I, this is something that I, it's just, I can't imagine that a parent would put their child in that kind of jeopardy for the rest of their lives, but that's a statement, personal statement, it don't represent this board, but that, that's very concerning to me. Any other comments, questions from the Board of Commissioners tonight? Staff, you have anything further? Ms. Cook, thank you for coming, we appreciate your presentation this evening.
Appreciate it, thank you so much.
Thank you. Item five is the ABC Board presentation. We have with us Mr. Chip Chagnum, the Chair of that board. Good evening, sir.
Good day, Mr. Chairman, and Board members. Thank you very much for having us here this evening. This is our yearly briefing to you, required under the statute, and first I'd want to thank this board for appointing such a great, other than myself, board members to come and help the, move this board along to include your own Vice Chairman, Mr. Booker. He does a great job for us, and you'll see some great improvements since he has joined this board. Next slide, please. So that's our mission statement, and it, it has not changed, that this is how we get our, our goals and objectives and resourcing. If it's not in this mission statement, frankly, we don't, we, we just don't do it. So here's what we live and die by, if you will, but it's, the optimum word here is controlling. That is the difference in state of North Carolina and other seventeen states that are controlled states, control and sale. So, thank you. Next, please. There is our staff and you. She said, do not mention me here, but yes, I must mention Ms. Melanie here, she's our CFO and representing the fine staff that we have in body, and so Paul has a little illness evening and was under the weather, so Ms. Melanie's representing. We also want to thank our law enforcement people, and of course, we have, under that law enforcement, you know, ALE is our management team, and our execution team is Craven's own Sheriff's Department, and they're taking a bigger role in our security and doing outstanding work. We've had many, many positive comments from that, by the way. Next slide, please. So we've had a busy year. Your Craven County ABC Board has had the busiest year, as far as I can see, since nineteen thirty-five, other than the original stores starting up. We have had a busy, busy year. We have completed our five-year modernization program this, this, this year. So all of our stores have been completely, literally, from the roof to the floor, have been revamped, roof to the floor. We have put in four roofs, that's why I can safely say that. The only reason why we didn't put on one, it's owned by TDI. So we have put walls up and down in the downtown stores, you know, the wall was gonna fall down out in the middle of the street. So we have done a lot of work for Craven County, and the end result is that you have today, and this is not me saying this, this is the Chairman of the North Carolina ABC Commission, Hank Bauer, coming and visiting us, saying that without a doubt that Craven County has the best stores in the state of North Carolina. It's not me saying that, that's the commission. So we've, we've done some great, great things this year. You participated in the groundbreaking for Bridgeton, and that's, campus is five-point-three million dollars underway, right? At present, it's somewhere around fifteen percent complete, and it's on target for August of next year's opening. That store, we will probably will produce somewhere between three-point-five and four million dollars of revenue for this, the county. Let's just conclude it. We had store number one, downtown store, that was our last store on the modernization program, and completed that here this year as well on the seventeenth of March. So we've had a very busy, busy year. We've invested, when we came on this project, sir, we had about three-hundred-and-eighty-thousand dollars of backlog maintenance. So we've eaten through all of that and done one-point-seven million dollars of maintenance and modernization in Craven County ABC stores, to give you some idea. Next slide, please. So our goals, we, you know, when we came to you, this board, last year, these were our goals that we had, and you can see we met or exceeded each goal, and to include being the first board in the state to have a delivery to the liquor-by-the-drink. So this, this takes, helps our liquor-by-the-drink folks, before they had to come to the stores and pick up their product, this takes away time from their store. Actually, frankly, it took away time from us doing it, this methodology. Today, we deliver that to them, they order it electronically, we deliver to them, and relieves them of a lot of insurance issues, and much more efficiencies. Those efficiencies have been garnished, and you'll see that at the end of this briefing when we come forth with a check to the county. But we've, we've gained a lot of efficiency. So we've done this with zero, zero growth, and, and actually put people back into the front of our stores. So that part has grown. So we've helped, we've had growth in both the front door, if you will, and now the liquor-by-the-drink part in Craven County. They have their own store within the, within the warehouse. So they, so if you're, if you're a liquor-by-the-drink customer, you have your own place to go to if you want to go there, but we will deliver, but if you want to come and visit us, you have an emergency, you know, you can come to the store. Next slide, please. So our goals this year coming up, when we, when we started this, this, when this board changed in two thousand and twelve, to give you some understanding, we were down about six-point-two million dollars, and Craven County Commission got about two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand, and the cities and towns got somewhere around thirty-five to forty thousand. You can see now we're doing fifteen-seven, that's what we're doing now, fifteen-point-seven million, and we expect that to grow about three percent this year. So we will be into the sixteen-million-dollar revenue range certainly next year, perhaps with the, because we, we open up in August, so it's not gonna, the, the new Bridgeton store won't affect this fiscal year, it will be next year. One of the things that we've done, if you ever come to the stores, you'll see that we have a boutique section, if you will, with high-end alcohol, and I'll tell you that Craven County this year sold a bottle of Louis the Thirteenth cognac, twenty-five-year cognac, and it goes for four thousand dollars a bottle. That was a special order, but routinely, Craven County is known as a, the place to go for high-end product, and we routinely sell eighteen-hundred to two thousand dollars a bottle of product. When that happens, the county gets somewhere between a hundred and forty to a hundred and fifty dollars of revenue per bottle. That, that bottle of cognac, the county got three-hundred-and-sixty-five dollars, some, some understanding of where the profit is. We have increased our employee wage, so the, the minimum wage that we now pay is well into thirteen dollars an hour. The average employee at Craven County ABC says it makes about seventeen-fifty to eighteen dollars an hour, the management team makes about twenty-two to twenty-three dollars an hour. We first took that over, eighty percent of our people are getting minimum wage, seven dollars and twenty-five cents, so we've come a far. Next slide, please. We talked about the law enforcement, and our law enforcement policies. This year, we've instituted a device called the Flock, and it's a camera that's in, it's in the county, a county property, that as people come in, it will take a picture of your, your plate, and, and if you are wanted, if there's a warrant, I'll appear arrest, it takes approximately four-point-three seconds for that to show up on the sheriff's and the state police and ALE's screens, that there is someone with a warrant, outstanding warrant at a place. We've also increased our cameras, our quality of the camera, and all this is, you know, safety reasons, not to necessarily, you heard, you heard my, the speaker in front of me talk about these things. This year alone, Sheriff Hughes people have arrested about eighteen people dealing drugs, trying to, dealing illegal liquor licensing, liquor selling, reselling from an adult to a, you know, a child, east, east or property outside. I mean, foolishness, because they're gonna get them, but, you know, we've, that's what we're up against. Next slide, please. This is what it looks like on that, that slide, this is from sixteen, and you can see where we're, where we're at, and we, we met our target this, this year, and I, I think that we will certainly be, you know, the sixteen-two to sixteen-four, I mean, yeah, sixteen-two to sixteen-four next year, and that will give a higher level of gross revenue to the, the county. Next slide, please. Here's the details of the famous, you know, tail of the bottle. So you can see out of that fifteen, that fifteen-two, that we had three-point-three million dollars goes to the state right away, taxation, quite a bit of money. Craven County got one-point-three, and it will go to the general fund, and then there's other additional monies which go to the health, health and also that goes down to tritium, helps, helps offset some of that cost. You'll also notice that the county's local education fund, this year, working with the sheriff even more closely, we, we discovered that the. sheriff even more closely, we, we discovered that the DARE program is back, trying to stop some of these, these issues that you're faced with now and discover them with the resource officer is in the sixth grade, fifth grade, you know, that level, they, they come up with. That's the place to try to attack this problem. So, your Craven County ABC Board is sponsoring the DARE program in the county and all the schools this year with Sheriff Hughes, and we're happy to, to, to do that with him. Gives his resource officers a fund in which they can get. And let me tell you that we've, we've gone there and given these kids their graduation certificate, listened to them, give their, their stories about why it's so important not to get into this area, really heartwarming. We also have with the, the, we've done it with the Boy Scouts in the past and Hawaii and CSAT. So, we have a steady, a steady flow of other people that we're helping, and of course, the county is our biggest, biggest person which we provide money in that area. So, there it is, where we are. There's the story. You can see that we also give money to the other jurisdictions as well, so our friends in Havelock and New Bern and Vanceboro this year are all gonna get some, get a, get a check as well. Next slide, please. Do I have any questions from the board?
Questions, Commissioners? We don't have any questions, sir?
Good, sir. Next slide, please. Well, sir, it's always a pleasure to come up and give this board this check.
I'm gonna let you give it to our finance officer, Mr. Craig Warren.
Yeah, see, he, he's asking for this check.
Okay, all right.
And it's for $1.73 million because of the plus of money that you provided.
Thank you, Ms. Chagrin. We appreciate it. Thank you, Ms. Mallondy. Good to see you too this evening. All right, next, Commissioners, this departmental matters. The first item we have is Soil and Water Hurricane Dorian Stream Debris Project. We have Mr. Patrick Baker. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. So, the Soil and Water Conservation Department was notified of a funding offer for Hurricane Dorian Stream Debris Removal Funding Project. This project is assuming the grant funds originally designated to the Core Creek Drainage District in the amount of $89,342. Core Creek Drainage District could not get a federal DUNES number to be able to execute the grant. We're requesting the board to approve a budget amendment and revised ordinance for this project and ask the Chairman to sign the contract as shown in attachment number six.
So moved. All right, we have a motion to have a second.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the budget amendment in the amount of $89,342, and also to authorize Chairman to sign the project contract. Any discussion on the motion? Here none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll, please.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Liner?
Oh, yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker? Chairman Jones?
Yes. Thank you, Patrick. Thank you. Appreciate it. All right, next item is Sheriff, Sheriff McHugh, Chip Hughes. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Chairman. Commissioners, thank you for allowing us to come before you this evening. Couple things, two of them this evening are our grants. The first one is gonna be a COVID-19 support grant budget amendment. This is a grant that we received almost $74,000 from North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services to help keep the COVID not only from coming into our facility, our jail, but if it does get in there, how do we prevent the spread of it and kind of contain it? So, of course, the credit once again goes to our staff members, and I've brought with me Captain Quick. He's our jail administrator. Answer any questions you might have about this grant, as he's the one that was very instrumental in putting it together and figuring out what all we needed.
Right, any questions? All right, here are no questions. Do we have a motion to?
So moved.
All right, I have a motion and a second to approve the budget amendment in the amount of $73,892. Any discussion on the motion? I would just say on behalf of the board, thank you, Mr. Quick, for getting this grant for us. It was great. Any further discussion? Here none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Liner?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker? Chairman Jones?
Yes. All right, and then B.
Yes, sir. This is a pretty big one. Really proud of this one. This is something, obviously, we're doing a lot of things different in our confinement facility, and, you know, as we've heard tonight, just by everybody's coming here, we talked about the mental health issues that we're having, and how do we deal with them? And obviously, our jail is wrapped up with them. They're different than any other jail. Well, what are we doing about it, is the question? How are we helping these people? How are we working on cutting down the recidivism rate? And how are we getting these folks the help? You know, first, I want to commend you again, as I have before, on funding a jail navigator, our jail. That's something that a lot of jails are not doing, but the ones that are doing it are seeing huge amount of success. This ties in with, hand in hand with it. This is a grant from the Office of Justice Programs in the amount of $970,757 over a three-year period. The first part is for $204,630. That is for what we think will be from now until the end of the year, as we put these programs in place. So, Major McFadden has been a crucial part of this. As Dr. Farrell, if you would at least stand up, I want to, cannot thank her enough for this. She brought it to us. She's had success stories. She's got a program that works, and she is our project director. So, she has the roadmap with a proven history of success, and we can't thank her enough for stepping up and being part of this, because honestly, without her, this would not have happened. So...
Thank you.
That's good.
Be glad to answer questions about, it, it is a, it is a big process, but any questions we have, we can drill down on it as deep as you want.
Any questions, board members?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the budget amendment in the amount of $204,630. Any further discussion on the motion? Here none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Liner?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes.
Sheriff, Major, anything for us this evening to add?
Last week was a very busy week. We had some good football games. Very pleased about that. Not eventful, but once again, a strong SRO presence. All of our schools are just about filled, which I'm very pleased with that, as we've got some outstanding applicants, and once again, y'all helped with that, with recruitment and retaining. And so, so thank you very much, and we don't have anything.
Any questions for the sheriffs this evening?
Just a comment that, I don't know if everybody heard, in the audience at least, that within the last week, we had a major drug bust early one morning. Was it like five homes? Am I correct?
We, and that's an ongoing investigation, but that was just the first initial stage of it, and I'll tell you, we, we took some major criminals off the streets of Craven County. We took a lot of dangerous, dangerous narcotics off the street as well, which, what we took off the street could probably have taken out Craven County seven or eight times over. So, we're, we're very, and once again, the, the partnership that we've got with Homeland Security, our U.S. Attorney, ATF, DEA, U.S. Marshal Service, and, and our team, New Bern Police Department, this was a collaborative effort, and it was just well orchestrated, and everything went off without a hitch. Nobody was hurt, and we got three, five really bad people off the streets.
That's good.
And a lot of drugs and weapons.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate you being here this evening. All right, item eight is finance. Mr. Craig Warren.
Good evening, Commissioners. I have two items on the agenda for your consideration tonight. The first one is a budget amendment for the purchase of real estate for the airport. At the October 17th, 2022 meeting, Commissioners approved the purchase of real estate on behalf of Coastal Carolina Airport Authority. This real estate is to be held by the county until the airport has secured their grant of funding through the FAA. Such time as they do, they will turn around and then buy that property back from the county. So, in your agenda package, you have a budget amendment for your consideration. The, the amount is $295,889.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the budget amendment in the amount of $295,889. Any further discussion on the motion? Here none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Liner?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes.
All right, and B.
Okay, the second item is a budget amendment for the city of Havelock, or for the benefit of the city of Havelock. Last fiscal year, the Commissioners approved appropriated 50% cost share funding match for, to enhance the community recreation facility located off Highway 101. The original appropriation was $84,700. The improvements included fencing and metal buildings in and around the recreational facility. The final bill had come in at $88,325, but it did not come in time to pay it out of last year's budget, so therefore, we're bringing it back before the board. We've reestablished the budget amendment.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the budget amendment in the amount of $88,325. Any further discussion on the motion? Here none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Liner?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes. Thank you, Craig. Commissioners, next, we have appointments. You have pending, current, and upcoming appointments. Any Commissioners have any nominations for pending? Here none, we will move to current. We have two there. The City of New Bern Board of Adjustment. You have in your agenda packets the ETJ appointment needed. When is our deadline on that, Madam Clerk?
December 22nd.
December 22nd. All right. Jack, if we can, let's get together on that end of this week, next week. Okay? No Commissioners has any appointments, do you? Okay, if you do, please let Jack know, and we'll start seeking out. The next was the Volunteer Agriculture District for District One. There is a vacancy. This gentleman does not desire to be reappointed. You don't have nobody at the current time?
I called on that, and I'm waiting for Mike Carroll to get back to me.
Okay. All right, we'll defer consideration, and Commissioners, if that's all right with you?
Yeah.
All right, then we have upcoming appointments. You see those terms expiring soon, so please make note of that. Any other appointments to bring before the Board of Commissioners this evening? Here none, we will move now to the County Attorney's Report.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, good evening. I have one item for your consideration this evening. It involves the final approval for the sale of property that the county owns jointly with the City of New Bern. We acquired it through the tax foreclosure process. The property has an address of 612 Second Avenue here in the city of New Bern with a parcel ID number of 8-012-216. The final bid is $2,022. The tax value of the property is $4,000 in the original past due taxes, and the cost of foreclosure totaled $11,188.33. As with other jointly owned properties, the City of New Bern has acted on this first and has granted its final approval, and I would suggest to the board that we should do the same.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the resolution approving conveyance of parcel number 8-012-216. Any further discussion on the motion? Here none. All those in favor, 65% say an aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passed. Thank you, sir. County Manager's Report, Mr. Vay.
Mr. Chairman, I have two quick comments. First was, I wanted to just echo what Commissioner Liner said earlier, and I want to thank our facility staff and Mr. Hodges on getting as many buildings as we could lit up tonight. I think it looks great. As you go home tonight, I think you'll see more of a green glow than we could when we left when the sun went down. Kind of a sad note, many of you know, former Commissioner Lee K. Allen passed away, and I know some of the Commissioners may have comments about serving Commissioner Allen, but I just wanted, for the record, to say a couple things as the manager. Lee K. served from 1994 to 2014 as a Commissioner, served this board as a Chairman several times, but a couple things stood out to me. One of them's kind of funny, we talked about today, but I think when, when we talked last week about Lee K., his passion was public health. There's a lot of things in this county that Lee K. had his hand on, by not only serving on this board, but by serving on the Board of Health here, the Health Foundation, along with, after his service as a Commissioner on the FQHC Board for a couple years. Lee K. often took his time, the year getting ready to take, to talk about things the Health Department was doing. Mr. Jones, you remember, when I first got here, he was the National Representative from North Carolina to the Association, to NACO, to serve on that board, and he had a lot of information. I called Mayor Tyson today out in Trent Woods because there was something, right as Lee K. did part of this board, that he brought, and it was a video, and on a VHS tape, that we actually had to convert to a CD. It's from 1995. The Board of Commissioners at the time filmed a Crime Stoppers video. Jean and I spent the better part of this morning trying to determine what the song was, because we couldn't remember, but it was "Lifestyles of the Not So Rich and Famous", and Lee K. took great pride in being in that video. He took great pride in law enforcement and the work he did there to try to get the word out about getting folks involved if they see a crime. Cared about Havelock. We heard that the other day from Mayor Sanders at his funeral, and the things he did with his church. He was a good man, and I know he enjoyed the last few years with his wife, Gail, and his family. So, I just want to make those comments for the record. Commissioners, I don't have anything else unless you have any items for me.
Any questions for the County Manager? Thank you, sir. All right, we'll go to the Commissioners' Report. We will begin, Commissioner Liner.
Sir, I have a couple things. Again, I'd like to thank the board for Operation Green Light, but we got a lot of things going on. I think all of us got an invitation to them this week. Marine Corps Balls have started. We have one tomorrow night at the Convention Center. That's the second mall one. Wednesday, we've got the military stand-down at the Armory that will be going on for our Thursday, I will be attending the American Legion Marine Corps Ball with them, and on Friday, you all have an invitation for lunch, the veterans luncheon at Temple Baptist Church from 11:00 to 1:00. So, if you have an opportunity, please stop by and meet some of the veterans or greet some of the veterans. I think Jack had enough to say about Lee K. Lee K. did a lot for this county and, and the city. I mean, we've lost a number of people this past week down in Havelock, and it's, it's a loss. I mean, it's getting at that time, getting up in the age, and you start seeing people and your friends you've been with for a long, long time, that's, that's passing, so, thank you. Thanks for everything.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Smith?
I don't have anything at this time.
Commissioner Mark?
I haven't got anything other to say, that you also played the saxophone.
Yep. He did.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Just one thing. Tomorrow's election day. For anyone who has not already voted in early voting, please exercise your rights as citizens of this great country and go vote. Thank you, ma'am.
And also, tomorrow is election day for me, so...
All right, Commissioner.
I wish everybody to come out and, and vote, and also like to say a good thing about Lee K. Allen. He was a good man. I've known him a long time, and I did attend his funeral, and I spoke to his wife, and she's very happy in her heart about she's there, so I want to her that God bless her, and if anything that I can do for her, give me a call, and I will try to help her. That's all, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Vice Chair Booker? Only comment that I, well, two comments. I want to welcome Alderman Bob Brinson we have with us. I'm sorry I failed to recognize you at the beginning of the meeting. I hope things are going well in your new job with the City of New Bern, and we appreciate your service. Thank you, sir. Thank you for being here.
Thank you for being here this evening. Only other thing I would add about Lee K., something that he did the last two years that we did together, is before our commissioners' meeting, him and I would go into what used to be the commissioners' office, and we'd pray together before we came in here for our meetings. And he, you know, when I was, 1994, when there was a landslide, he went into office, he didn't think too much of my grandfather, and, you know, it's amazing how things turn around. You know, he was one of the strongest avid, well, he just did not like my grandfather, I just, to be honest. But at the end, it was amazing how him and I had become best of friends, and the respect that I, you know, had for him, not only as a colleague, but also as a brother in Christ. And I'm, he's a great, great man, and I definitely, our prayers with his family at their loss.
Okay, commissioners, if we have no further reports, we do have a closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143, 31811A and 3, to consult with an attorney to protect the attorney-client privilege, and 143, 31811A5, to establish the public body's negotiating position for acquisition of real property or instruct staff or agents about the negotiation. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
I have a motion and a second, that we would go into closed session, I would ask for about a 10-minute recess to allow staff to get the room in order. All those in favor, 65, say an aye.
Aye.
Opposed?